Call this meeting of the Cunningham Town Board to order for Monday, November 4th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Chair Marlin?
Here. Could we have minutes of the previous meeting for October 7th, 2019? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Additions to the agenda, I would like a motion for a very brief follow-up to the housing report that was presented to the town board last week by staff. You should have gotten, that was in your packet as well.
I'll move addition of a response or a reflection to the housing report.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. And at this point, it'll be, I'd say, under reports of officers. Is public participation, it appears that all the public input cards are for the city council meeting, so we'll move on to committee to verify bills. Supervisor, please.
This month, we had expenditures from the town fund of $47,083.55. We had a general assistance fund expenditures of $52,154.65. The total is $99,237.20. You have the bills before you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I wonder if you could provide some background under administrative services. There's Timothy, I'm not going to pronounce his last name correctly, and then M S F T.
So, if, so the N F F T is Microsoft, but Timothy Gorjak, I believe, is an assessor expenditure that Wayne can speak to.
Why don't you come on up here, Wayne?
So, Tim is the head of commercial in the city of Wilmington Township, and the particular expense on the bills this month is for some training he did with my office for James, who is our new hire.
So, is employee training?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the bills, town fund general assistance?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, that motion passes. Reports of officers, Sheila Dodd, her grants manager, will be providing some information.
Good evening. We wanted to get, to provide a brief response to the supervisor's report on housing quality of township participants presented at last month's town board meeting. The original report discussed rental housing quality based on the city's systematic inspection data, recommended a change to their rental registration ordinance, and discusses the need to improve access to quality affordable housing. The report did bring to light some improvements we could make to how we show the rental inspection data. We should be more clear that the data is all-inclusive, that it contains not only the most recent grade for an address, but also provides the grade if it's been inspected more than once. We'll work with IT to either show the data differently or provide more clarity about what the data is so that when outsiders review it, they understand that it's all-inclusive. We ran the overall distribution of grades using only the most recent grades, and that chart is in the city staff memo. We'd be more than willing to work with township to verify the data for their clients. Regarding the rental registration ordinance, last year was the first time we denied reregistration to a property owner for not complying with the ordinance and began the relocation process. Working with the township, we collectively have identified many ways to improve that process. We intend to implement these improvements the next time we need to deny to reregister a property due to noncompliance. As a result, we don't recommend any changes at this time. Rent burden is an issue across the country for those who are extremely low-income, as so many of our population are students. It's important to break down the data when looking at local employment numbers, which we've done in the memo. It's clear that most of those working part-time or not working at all are under the age of 25. Many of those will be students, and some, but not all, of those students have access to other funds to help pay their rent. Finally, city staff would agree that access to quality affordable housing is important, and the city's past and present work reflects that concern.
Any questions for Sheila? Sharice?
I just, I guess I need more information regarding what the compliance, the compliance is and all that kind of stuff, just for my information. It's not that I disagree with your memo or having, but I want more information for my own edification here, so that I can...
Are you talking about the grading system?
Yeah, the grading system and so on and so forth. And what is it that makes, let's say, a homeowner that's renting out of compliance, that kind of thing?
If it's okay, could we just have a separate meeting?
Oh, definitely.
But we could explain how the process works?
Yes, that would be very helpful for me. Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually, as Sheila pointed out, last year was the first time we actually came close to even implementing that denial of registration in 12 years, and this was a highly unusual event, so...
How many, how many people in general, I guess, how does one get out of compliance?
Oh, there are many ways.
Okay. That's what I need to know.
You're not bringing your property up to minimum code, and then, under the rental registration, we do have the option of not renewing, and this particular landlord was a chronic noncomplier. So that is really the only leverage we have on landlords like that. And luckily, we don't have to use it very often at all, so, so the process last year was kind of a learning curve for everybody, and we learned a lot from last year. And the goal is to not force anyone to move and to get people in compliance, and so that's what we're aiming for, and we'll, I think we'll be in a much better shape this year. And we do have the option of making some changes within the, without having to re-admend the ordinance, we have a lot of flexibility within the ordinance.
Now, with those ordinances, are those ordinances under zoning, or are they under planning, or?
It's a rental registration ordinance.
Rental registration, okay.
So it was passed 12 years ago, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's been in effect 12 years, so this is, and it's worked very well. And we have about 10,500 units registered in the city of Urbana.
Okay. And are they required to register if they're renting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just hoping for some clarification on when properties are re-inspected. So generally speaking, the housing inspector will come through and make a list of things, maybe your smoke alarm doesn't have a battery, you know, maybe your sidewalk is crumbling, whatever the items are. And then, after you get kind of cited for those and asked to fix those items, then the person comes back out and makes sure that you fixed all of those items. So how is that reflected in the data? Do you have two scores then, so the initial score and then the kind of follow-up score, or is it only the initial score?
The grade is based off of the initial inspection, so regardless of the number of violations, all violations are corrected before that inspection's cleared out. However, that grade does not change.
So even if you bring your property up to compliance, the grade never changes?
Correct, until the next systematic inspection.
Until the next system.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so the Class Ds and Fs, so 10 properties in this database, we would assume rectified those, these items, or they were declared not habitable?
Correct.
Okay.
Dennis?
But, if we're saying that the grade will not be corrected until the next scheduled rental inspection, and we only do, we're doing, we're cycling through buildings to do these inspections, and it might be, what, three to four years before that inspection comes back again?
Typically, it's probably closer to five to seven.
It's a long time to have a bad score if you've corrected your property, and it's up to code. So how's that work out for the benefit of the community?
So the grades are based off the initial inspection, and so, we actually, when we reran the data and looked at the units that had been previously inspected, they were part of the actual original data that was looked at, you can, most of the properties either stayed the same or went up. There were a few that degraded, you know, so it's kind of more of an average type, you know, grading process, I would guess you'd say, because again, we've identified those violations during that inspection, so they've corrected them, but a lot of times, depending on what those violations are, you know, or depending on the property management or owner, you know, some of those can fall back into, you know, some sort of disrepair, generally speaking.
But if the person has corrected the errors or the problems that you've been cited, isn't there a way of then correcting his score, because, and bringing the score back to what it would be considered a not passing or approved score?
Well, if the grades were changed after reinspection, every property would be listed as an A, because technically, all the violations would be corrected. So that wouldn't be very accurate either, because although they may be compliant and violation-free, when we close that inspection process, you know, they're not going to stay that way forever.
But that's true with any property, isn't it true? I feel like, yeah, but I mean, I feel like we're basically stigmatizing a property that's been approved through the second inspection for four or five years before that person has a chance to correct and bring up to code his grades, his rating. It doesn't seem fair to me, as if I were to be the landlord, and my property was affected that way. There's got to be a way of fixing that. Or listing two scores.
I was thinking that if a property got a D or F, they would have to be re-inspected within a year? Is that, am I thinking of somebody else's ordinance?
They're eligible, it's not a requirement. So based on the grade, they can be inspected on a more frequent basis.
Okay. And then, so if the second time they got inspected a year later, and they got a B, then that would be the most recent grade?
Correct.
Okay. If they don't get inspected within a year, can they request an inspection?
Yeah, I mean, we would do a systematic, I've done that for a few properties that, one was getting ready to do a remodeling project, and they wanted the city to come through and basically, you know, tell them what violations they may, you know, because they were doing some electrical work. So they asked the city to come through ahead of that remodel and do an inspection, so we did a systematic inspection that way.
If somebody was embarrassed about a D or F they got last year, they could request you to come out and re-inspect so that their most recent grade would show?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
And we actually could look into if it's possible to show a way that the people have complied and no longer have, you know, a bad grade, and there might be a way we can reflect that.
It only seems fair for a person who's done due diligence not to be blighted by a bad score for several years and potentially, if they fix it. Well, of course, they'd have to fix it. If they didn't, well, they still have the score.
I think you have a good point there.
I think I do, too.
We'll look in that. Okay. Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you. It's a work in progress. Thanks, Nick. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Any unfinished business?
We have two other officers, myself and Wayne.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm not sure if city staff is officers, but, so, I just wanted to do a quick overview. General assistance participants were at 92, 27 are homeless. The GA clients total served from July to present, I've started to do running numbers, so we can just see calendar year, how many individuals served, is 160. Rental assistance is 19 households served, up from 14. That's a pretty high number that we've seen. We had two move-in cases and 17 eviction prevention cases. Total household served July 1st to present is 71. And actually, the program has served 523 individuals in less than two years. About 250 of them, 222 of them actually are children, so that's a lot of people served in a short amount of time in a small community like ours. Just wanted to let you know, we had a harvest party, and the mayor attended. We were happy to see you there. It was rained out, and so we moved indoors. We still fed over 100 guests. I had actually estimated 80, so it was good that Baldurada's had deeply discounted the food. They're currently, they've just opened in Lincoln Square's Food Court. I encourage people to check them out, it was delicious. H2O Salon, which is also a downtown business, hair-cutting business, is running a campaign to have their customers and friends donate to Cunningham Township's Angel Donor Fund. 100% of those funds go directly to me, material needs of our participants. We now have things to vote by the town board, a way to make donations online through PayPal at CunninghamTownship.org. We also have a breakdown of angel donor uses, and we list the donors on our website unless someone asks to be excluded or anonymized. And we have quite a large list now of people that we thank either for giving their volunteer effort or their monetary contributions. I don't know, Wayne, did you have any officers report for tonight?
Okay, sure.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to report that our office is currently tracking 325 border review items, so those, everything is from assessment complaints, actions, exemption requests, and so on. That number's a little misleading. There were a lot of, the Department of Transportation brought strips of land on each side of the university between approximately Cunningham all the way west to the border, so that's 54 of those parcels included in that. 49 of those parcels are OSF requesting property tax relief. Of the 325, 48 parcels are commercial. So while the overall numbers are abnormal, there was an uptick in commercial assessment complaints. Still any questions?
No questions? Thank you, Wayne.
I just want to remind, and this is for anybody, if anyone has any questions about their assessment or how it's derived, or how it can be changed in the future, feel free to call the office, the Cunningham Township Assessor's office. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to echo Danielle's report. The harvest party was a wonderful celebration, and I want to thank our community donors, Baldurada's and H2O Salon, for their support. And really, the garden that you supported over the summer has been a tremendous success and extremely useful in filling that food gap, so thank you for that, everyone.
Yeah, I also just want to mention Solagrosha, which gave bounteous amounts of vegetables every Saturday. We actually had an intern pick them up at noon from the farmer's market, and we never had spoiled food. So between Solagrosha and our township garden, which had a great year, we really fed a lot of people, and it's a testament to how this, our community comes together to support our neighbors.
And the great compost from the Landscape Recycling Center.
It's true.
Dennis?
I'd like to ask if you're going to do a warm clothing drive again in the township?
Oh, absolutely. I am so sorry, I didn't include that. I've had a very long day. Okay, so, we have a warm coat drive, and actually, we got a number of donations, and they were completely cleaned out. We had a big run right before the, right as the cold snap happened. So we posted to the community that we needed coats like ASAP. I mean, literally, my son offered his coat to a kid in the office, and when I posted that, two days later, thanks to Unitarian Church Solidarity Sundays, and some woman named Jay who lives on Vine Street, who came in and offered us about 25 coats. We actually have a ton of coats and warm weather gear. It will quickly deplete as happens each winter, so I just want to let folks know you can drop those warm winter gear. We're just looking for hats, coats, mittens, scarves, and hoodie jackets. No, we can't really accommodate clothing, because we just don't have enough space, but we would ask people if you want to donate clothing that goes free to individuals in our community. The best place to donate is Empty Tomb. The other option, sell the clothes, but if you want low-income families to just be able to go shop for free, Empty Tomb does provide that service. So anyway, I just would encourage folks to take this opportunity to clean out your closets and donate any extras that you have to township.
Are sweaters good for this?
Actually, if they, just if they zip. Otherwise, it's just, it's too much. But sweaters would be a great donation to Empty Tomb, and people really need that warm weather gear.
Bill?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that I got a note in a plastic bag on my door the other day from a church group that is collecting coats for you, and it will actually be pretty handy for me because I work at the same time your office is open, so I think I'll wait till Sunday and leave it out for them and let them deliver it.
That, I just want to give props to the Unitarian Youth Group, which basically went door-to-door last year, and once they saw our post for help, they decided to do it again this year. We will have a bin outside of township shortly, and so people could come at any hours and drop them off in the bin. Our last bin, like, I think, blew to Easter bit, not on those windy days, so we have to get a new bin, but we'll have that out soon.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions on coats? Okay. Tax levy? I guess we have new business. First up is the Resolution T 2019-11-018R, which is the resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy for tax year 2019, collectible in 2020.
So I just have one note, which I also put in the supervisor's memo. So essentially, our levy estimate, it's the estimates that we put forward assume that Carl and OSF will be returned to the tax rolls. Just in case that happens, we need to do that, otherwise we don't recoup those costs. Because Cunningham Township is under PTEL, or what is known as tax caps, essentially, to be blunt, we could put any number down here, and, you know, we'll be capped by PTEL and a formula by the community. So although it looks like a large increase, it's actually not. We just have to assume that those, as all the other taxing bodies do, that Carl and OSF may join the rolls. Any questions? Next month, we'll bring the final levy ordinance to you, and I'll have a breakdown by line item for what the levy, which fund it will go towards and what items will be funded.
I'd move approval of that resolution.
I'll second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion?
Mayor, actually, this needs to just be put on file for, and moved to the next town board meeting next month.
Would you like to modify your resolution?
Yes, well, I'll modify my motion.
Your motion.
Modify my second.
Okay. We'll modify that motion, and it was seconded by Dennis to put it on file for next month's meeting. Okay. Do we vote on that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, there should be a roll call vote on both of the resolutions.
Would you please call the roll?
Let's see, it was Jared, and seconded by?
Dennis.
Okay. Trustees Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is Resolution T 2019-11-019R, which is a resolution authorizing the township assessor and supervisor to establish a fleet credit card for Cunningham Township.
So this resolution, so because of the quarterly reassessment, my office is using the car every day, and we're buying fuel every day. We used to have a card with Mobil, but there are no more Mobil stations because Circle K got rid of them. So, so the way we buy fuel now is we just put it on a township credit card, which actually, when you do that, we have to pay all the sales taxes and other taxes, excise taxes are included in the fuel price. Getting a fleet card would allow us to avoid that, so we'll save a little money that way. So this is just asking for permission to fill out said application.
And just to be clear, this is a fleet card, not car?
This is a fleet card.
Card, okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Resolution T 2019-11-019R, which is authorizing the supervisor to establish a fleet credit card for Cunningham Township.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Bill?
What other advantages are there to having the fleet card? Does it require you to enter the odometer or anything when you buy gas?
Some of them do, some of them don't. I mean, there are different options, and we're still exploring, but of the many different vendors that will call me about this that I've researched, I would say 90% of them make you enter the odometer, as well as a PIN number, so not like, if it were to be dropped on the ground, no one can just use it. Like, you have to know the parcel, you have to know the PIN number. You have to be able to put the odometer in there.
And does it, so does it just go with the township vehicles, or can somebody use it on their private vehicle if they're doing township assessing in their private vehicle?
I would not authorize anyone to use it on their private vehicle. That's what mileage reimbursements are for, but, I mean, it's a card. It's not physically tied to a car, so...
I guess if you entered the odometer reading, it would be tied to a car. Probably depends how you set it up or something.
Right. And also, one other benefit is the fleet companies, they negotiate bulk discounts, so on top of saving on sales tax, on top of saving on the excise tax, there'll be additional savings. I mean, it might even, it might only be a penny or two a gallon, but there are additional savings on top of that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Jared?
Just for reference, Bill, the fleet cards, we use them at my job. They don't, odometer readings are for your reference. They're not for the card's reference by any means, because we use the same card on four different trucks, so you just enter it in and you have to know when you're in. It doesn't, it doesn't know which vehicle you're entering an odometer reading for, just FYI.
Okay. That's, I think that's a little different than what you buy cars. I think those cards go with the car, and then it's easier to track that way, and if there's ever any question about...
They have much fancier ones than Circle K offers. We've got, we've got one with Circle K. It doesn't, it doesn't know which vehicle it's associated with.
I see, so fleet card is the Circle K thing?
There are multiple gas stations. We've got one with Thorntons, we've got one with Circle K. We've got a few of them.
Oh.
There are many more options than I expected when I started looking into this. Frankly, every time I do, I get a headache because there's...
I think we're looking at a fleet card that goes to multiple locations, so. But just a comment about credit card controls. So the fleet card would be processed exactly the way the credit card is processed and controlled in our office. The mayor and executive office of the city basically shared with me the policies that the city uses for checkout of the credit card. We essentially created similar policies at the township. The credit cards, including the fleet card, are locked in a lockbox. There's a checkout process that's rigorous. I have a monthly audit. It would not be used for people's personal vehicles. They would have to submit, essentially for mileage. The one issue is now that the assessor is entering a quad year, the town car used to be available to both offices and essentially our office, and we distribute checks to landlords, I would say, two to three times a week. So currently, employees are not receiving mileage reimbursement, but not because they have the option of using the town car, and I've told folks, if you have the option of using the town car, you have to use the town car. Now, we don't have that option, so you'll probably see some reimbursements from our side in terms of mileage. But just in terms of fleet credit card, it'll be the exact same kind of controls with our credit card, and we've had no problems.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
End Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the town board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, November 4th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members Brown? Here. Hazen?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meetings of October 21st and the special meeting on October 21st. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval for those minutes.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any corrections?
Dean.
Dean. One of you is going to have to change your voice.
We could move them.
Get some helium.
Any corrections to the minutes? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Any additions to the agenda? Okay. We have one presentation tonight on snow removal. So I'd like to invite representatives from Public Works up. Please introduce yourselves.
My name's Andy Murphy. I'm an operations supervisor with the Public Works Department.
I'm Vince Gustafson, Deputy Director for Operations, Urbana Public Works. I'd like to start off tonight. I'm introduce Andy Murphy. He's been with the City of Urbana since 2003, and a supervisor in Urbana Public Works since 2014. Andy Murphy is our primary snow watch supervisor. So from November 1st through April, whenever April, the weather turns warm, Andy is basically frontline, crucial in helping making our decisions on how we react and when we react to the weather, which means watching weather alerts. About every weather channel, every forecast, he has an app on his phone for. So he and I discuss closely, like, when Halloween comes in, and all of a sudden, everybody starts saying we can get one inches to three inches to nothing. It's always a conversation between he and I, and he's the first person to put the plan in action. So we thought it'd be good to bring some information in front of you this evening to explain kind of what that plan is and how we, how we put it in, put it into effect. So I'll go ahead and pull this up.
I have nine weather apps on my phone, and not once have they ever been in any accordance.
So which one is used to declare a snow emergency?
It's like, it's like The Price is Right. I just kind of go...
And then when Andy's done, we'll take a few questions, and then we'll have a short video to show you.
So this is a, just a brief PowerPoint.
Do you want to speak into the mic from a little bit closer, Andy?
I'm sorry. It's a brief PowerPoint that was put together, just kind of covering the main topics of how our operations department kind of handles the upcoming snow weather. Our activities are dependent on the weather conditions for each snow event. Typically, if there's less than two inches expected, we can do a pretreatment or salt only. Plowing operations typically occur with two inches or more. Obviously, this is a case-by-case scenario based on temperatures and various factors. Our roads are prioritized for the snow removal. We have main roads, main routes, secondary routes. Typically, we, our first go is the high-volume arterial roads through the city, downtown, follow-up business districts, public parking lots, and then residentials lastly. We are on an extended shift. We go to 12-hour shifts, and each shift, we typically have 12 people, 12 "snowfighters", as we like to call. Sometimes, they don't agree with that, but total, in total, we have 23 pieces of equipment. That includes our dump trucks, our backhoes, our end loaders, basically anything we can put a plow on and/or spread salt with. Within the city, we cover 300 lane miles of roadway. Our annual budget is roughly $140,000 per year. On this slide, you'll see what we have kind of dictated as our primary routes. We have four of them in total. It's the main thoroughways through the city, kind of the main roads, campus, schools, hospitals, businesses, is typically where we start off when the snow starts falling. Secondary routes are kind of the outskirts. Ultimately, we want to be able to open up the main roads and then also have the outskirts and some of the main roads through the outer subdivisions cleared. Within the city, there are some other areas that are covered by the state township, and that's listed here, Illinois Route 130, Route 150, University Cunningham. Those are covered by the state, so if there's complaints there, please direct them towards the state. 74 ramps and bridges, the Edgewood subdivision, Scotchwood subdivision, the Yankee Ridge are all covered through the township's plowing. Within our residential areas, typically, the streets will be plowed within 20 hours after the end of the snowstorm. This is just kind of vague number. Once we get our primary secondaries done, we jump on residentials right away. So typically, that's faster if we can pull equipment off. Dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs are cleared with equipment. Our big dump trucks just feasibly cannot get through cul-de-sacs with the 12-foot plow on the front, so we do put plows on equipment and run smaller trucks to plow behind. Residential alleys that require access are plowed, and the city ordinance is five inches of snow is when that goes into effect. Much, much to grin, the removing snow from the driveways is a responsibility of the resident. And we all know that. We get off work, and we go home, and we shovel our own driveways as well. This city is divided into 16 residential zones that are cleared on a systematic rotational basis every year. And then here are 16 residential routes, kind of broken up throughout the city. Sidewalks, hot button topic. The Public Works Department removes all snow and ice from the sidewalks adjacent to city-owned buildings and properties. Adjacent to private property are a responsibility of the homeowner. The council passed an ordinance in January 5th, 2011 that requires property owners within identified snow removal districts to clear the adjacent public sidewalk of snow and ice. And clearance must occur within 24 hours of the declaration made by the Public Works This year, I mean, we have challenges every year, one being the X-factors and what we're going to get and when we'll get it. But this year, we are down four full-time positions due to transfers and retirements. We are actively, well, we're getting ready to interview for these positions, so hopefully we'll be getting them filled at some point soon. Our fleet of trucks is hit the 10-year mark, which is, we're putting a big emphasis, as we always do, but this year in particular, to the daily maintenance, preventative maintenance, trying to keep them in good conditions as we can, so we don't suffer the issues in the middle of a snowstorm, and the increase in salt prices. So we are certainly on the conservative side of spreading salt, and obviously, the weather will dictate that. So are there any, any questions pertaining to our, our snow season?
Bill?
Yeah, usually, we get a little brochure showing us which snow routes are going to be in which order for priority this year.
Yeah, that...
Can you tell us that, or will we get something like that? I know that's something that constituents ask about quite a bit.
Yeah, and that's on the city's website. It has a snow manual. Basically, I think last year, area nine, then 10, 11, 12, 13 congruently, and then the next year, we'd switch, so area 10 would be the first one. So every year, it just rotates down one, what would be considered our first, first area we go to.
So you're saying that it will be on the website this year instead of a hand, paper handout?
Well, I believe, I believe the handouts are being made, but it's also, as of last year, it was on the website as well.
Okay.
And then two other things. On the two inches of accumulation, I know, like, sometimes, like recently, it probably snowed two inches, but we didn't get anything on the streets, really. It pretty much vaporized or melted or something.
Right.
So do you just, you wait, you go out and measure in your parking lot or something when you get two inches? Because it's different than what the weather service would tell us.
Yeah, and we do. And, and two inches of accumulation, we consider that on the, on the pavement.
Okay.
And that's typically when, when the plows go down. If it's something that, you know, we can pretreat with, or if it's two inches over an extended period of time, and we can salt within the storm and to melt it, so you don't get that accumulation, then by all means. But, but two inches is typically when it can start causing the hazards for driving and those. So that's, that's, but yes, we do. I mean, we're out there, and I have a tape measure, and we are measuring what's on the pavement.
Okay. And then you said the fleet's 10 years old, so did they buy all those at one time? And wow.
Yes, that's the way, it's been done in the past, and we're actually in the, in the procurement process. Those trucks are being replaced this year, pending all approvals. But it, yeah, and I can't answer that specific question on why.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Sometimes, the current supply of salt has been a question for Public Works. Do we have a warehouse of salt at this time? Are we buying solid salt this year?
We, we have some left over from the, obviously, we've had mild winters the last couple of years, so we do keep the stockpile, and we keep ours at the county dome, the salt dome over there on the county property. Every year, we order 1,100 ton, has kind of been our mark. And we do have that set, and it's just, we call when we want it, and they deliver within a two to three-day span.
I see, okay.
Mary Alice?
So I know that we get an email when a snow event is declared, but how does the general public find out?
My understanding, and I'd have to ask Vince, his predecessor would, would put that email out. I believe that goes, there's a section on the city's website as well that has the updates, I believe.
I think it goes out to the media and other places as well. That's how people find out.
Okay. Any other questions? Jared?
Do we not directly send that to those in the snow districts? Do we not have lists for those folks?
I don't think we have contact information for all of them. Not, not real-time contact information.
Okay. Any other questions?
We have a little video that we want to show you.
We wanted to, we wanted to show you the unsung heroes of snow removal in Urbana. They frequently, well, they never get any really public attention.
Yeah, thanks to Jason Leggett and UPTV.
So thank you to Jason, yes.
And now, the starting lineup for your 2019 City of Urbana Snowfighting Team.
Colby Mackey, been here 18 years, concrete finisher slash operator, and I'll be plowing snow this winter.
Hello, I'm Jimmy Frye. I'm a landscape technician in Arbor Division. Been here five years.
Hello, my name is Charles Butts. I've been here for 23 years, and I'm an operator.
My name is Kevin Morris. I've been with the city for 10 years, and I'm a meter technician.
Hello, my name is Jim Kirby. I've been here for 21 years. I work for the sewer crew.
I'm Travis Corey, a fleet supervisor. I've been here for almost a year.
Mike Eaton, certified mechanic. I've been, I'm working on my fifth year.
Hal Livinggood, I've been a certified mechanic for 23 years with the City of Urbana.
Chris Lykins, finished my first year as a mechanic here.
And we keep the fleet on the streets.
Hi, my name's Cameron Welch. I've been here five years, and I'm a maintenance worker.
Phil McDonald, city electrician, four months.
Hi, I'm Tracy Edwards. I've been with the city for four years. I'm in the Arbor Division, and I'll be clearing snow this winter.
Hi, I'm Ray Knight. I worked, worked here for 20 years with the Sign and Paint Crew.
Mike Green, equipment operator, nine years and three months.
I'm Cale Becky. I've been here for seven years, and I'm an arborist.
Vince Gustafson, Deputy Director for Operations, and I've been with the city for 15 years.
Brad Osber, operations supervisor, 15 years.
Kevin Sanderson, Arbor Supervisor, 22 years.
Troy Richmond, operations supervisor for facilities. I've been with the city for eight years.
Andy Murphy, operations supervisor, 16 years.
My name is Doug Logue, and I've been here with the city about 18 years.
Tamile, University of Northern Iowa, equipment operator. Been here 29 years.
Hi, I'm Tanner Brown. I've worked in Arbor Division, and I've been here four years.
My name's Andy Little. I've been with the city for two and a half years. I'm the facilities maintenance tech.
Hi, my name is Denny Shaddix. I've been here for about 12 years. I'm a maintenance worker.
Hi, I'm Benny Gardner. I've been with the city for just about 10 years. I'm currently the traffic signal technician, and I'll be helping plow snow this year as well.
Hi, I'm David Ostver. I've been here about 18 years. I'm an electrician with the City of Urbana.
My name is Amanda Plotner, and this is my second season with the City of Urbana.
And my name is Tamara Jane Corbin, and this is my second snow season with the City of Urbana. And we're here to answer your calls.
My name is James Dross. I've been here a year and a half, and I'm a maintenance worker.
Hi, my name's Dave McDonough, an equipment operator. Been with the city 19 years, and I'll be clearing your streets this winter.
My name is Jared Beatty. Been with the City of Urbana for 11 years, and I'm a sewer crew operator.
Hi, my name is Jason Scott. I'm an equipment operator on the concrete crew. I've been with the city for just over 20 years.
Hi, I'm Chris Gatchey. I'm a heavy equipment operator here at the City of Urbana. I've been here for seven and a half years, and I'm here to make the community great.
Make some noise for your 2019 City of Urbana Snowfighting Team.
Yeah, I just...
That's the team.
I'd like to say, kudos to that crew, too, with our, with our staffing levels, the way we are. Basically, any, any major snow event, it's going to be all hands on deck. So one thing that points out in this video is that, you know, we're, we're all "snowfighters", but whenever it snows, we have to put everything else we do on hold, whether it's electrician or facilities work or street crews or whatever it is. So everything gets put on hold, and snow is our priority, both at work and personally, too, whether it's Christmas or Thanksgiving. I've spent many Christmas mornings here, so hats off to all these folks. I mean, they really put a lot, put a lot on hold to get us through, and we've got nothing but confidence in us here, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. And let's hope it doesn't snow on weekends like it did last year every single time.
Right.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have public input, and I have several people who wish to provide input. First is a card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. She reports that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems, chooses not to address the council. Thank you. Steve Ross, you wanted to speak now?
Hi, my name is Steve Ross. I spoke before your committee, the whole meeting, last week. I live at 609 West Green Street, and I'd like to talk to you just a little bit more about the snow removal ordinance that you're considering. I guess my main objection to that is I feel, I continue to feel it's unfair to target just people who live along Green Street and University Avenue. I looked at the City of Urbana Municipal Code this afternoon, and I saw that there was a nuisance in Chapter 11. There was vegetation as a nuisance, a whole section on that, and things like, you know, grass getting to be eight inches or higher, or invasive plants, things like that are considered nuisances that the homeowner would be required to deal with on the city parkway. And I looked, and I didn't see any geographical limitation there. It was the whole city. It didn't say just these streets, just green, or university, or Pennsylvania, or anything like that. There was no limitation. So I think that would make more sense for a snow removal ordinance. If you want maximum safety of pedestrians, you want the snow removed from all the sidewalks. And so that would be the, the most safe alternative. If you, if you're looking for the most bang for the buck, I, again, would suggest that
Colby Mackey, been here 18 years, concrete finisher slash operator, and I'll be plowing snow this winter.
Hello, I'm Jimmy Frye. I'm a landscape technician in Arbor Division, been here five years.
Hello, my name is Charles Butts. I've been here for 23 years and I'm an operator.
My name is Kevin Morris. I've been with the city for 10 years and I'm a meter technician.
Hello, my name is Jim Kirby. I've been here for 21 years. I work for the sewer crew.
I'm Travis Corey, Fleet Supervisor. Been here for almost a year.
Mike Eaton, Certified Mechanic. I've been, I'm working on my fifth year.
Hal Livinggood, I've been a Certified Mechanic for 23 years with the City of Urbana.
Chris Lytton, finished my first year as mechanic here.
And we keep the fleet on the streets.
Hi, my name's Cameron Welch. I've been here five years and I'm a maintenance worker.
Phil McDonald, City Electrician, four months.
Hi, I'm Tracy Edwards. I've been with the city for four years. I'm in the Arbor Division and I'll be clearing snow this winter.
Hi, I'm Ray Knight. I worked here for 20 years with the Sign and Paint Crew.
Mike Green, Equipment Operator, nine years and three months.
I'm Kale Beckewell. I've been here for seven years and I'm an arborist.
Vince Gustafson, Deputy Director for Operations, and I've been with the city for 15 years.
Brad Osber, Operation Supervisor, 15 years.
Kevin Sanderson, Arbor Supervisor, 22 years.
Troy Richmond, Operation Supervisor for Facilities. I've been with the city for eight years.
Andy Murphy, Operation Supervisor, 16 years.
My name is Doug Logue and I've been here with the city about 18 years.
Tamile, University of Northern Iowa, Equipment Operator, been here 29 years.
Hi, I'm Tanner Brown. I've worked in Arbor Division and I've been here four years.
My name's Andy Little. I've been with the city for two and a half years. I'm the Facilities Maintenance Tech.
Hi, my name is Denny Shaddix. I've been here for about 12 years. I'm a maintenance worker.
Hi, I'm Benny Gardner. I've been with the city for just about 10 years. I'm currently the Traffic Signal Technician and I'll be helping plow snow this year as well.
Hi, I'm David Ostver. I've been here about 18 years. I'm an electrician with the City of Urbana.
My name is Amanda Plotner and this is my second season with the City of Urbana.
And my name is Tamara Jane Corbin and this is my second snow season with the City of Urbana. And we're here to answer your calls.
My name is James Dross. I've been here a year and a half and I'm a maintenance worker.
Hi, my name's Dave McDum, Equipment Operator. Been with the city 19 years and I'll be clearing your streets this winter.
My name is Jared Beatty. Been with the City of Urbana for 11 years and I'm a Sewer Crew Operator.
Hi, my name is Jason Scott. I'm an Equipment Operator on the Concrete Crew. I've been with the city for just over 20 years.
Hi, I'm Chris Gatchey. I'm a Heavy Equipment Operator here at the City of Urbana. I've been here for seven and a half years and I'm here to make the community great.
Make some noise for your 2019 City of Urbana Snowfighting Team.
That's the team. I like to say, kudos to that crew too. With our staffing levels, the way we are, basically, any major snow event, it's going to be all hands on deck. So one thing that points out in this video is that, you know, we're all snow fighters, but whenever it snows, we have to put everything else we do on hold, whether it's electrician or facilities work or street crews or whatever it is. So everything gets put on hold and snow is our priority, both at work and personally too, whether it's Christmas or Thanksgiving. I've spent many Christmas mornings here, so hats off to all these folks. I mean, they really put a lot on hold to get us through and we've got nothing but confidence in us here too, so, thank you.
Thank you. And let's hope it doesn't snow on weekends like it did last year every single time.
Right.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have public input and I have several people who wish to provide input. First is a card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. She reports that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems, chooses not to address the council. Thank you. Steve Ross, you wanted to speak now?
Hi, my name is Steve Ross. I spoke before your committee, the whole meeting, last week. I live at 609 West Green Street and I'd like to talk to you just a little bit more about the snow removal ordinance that you're considering. I guess my main objection to that is I feel, I continue to feel it's unfair to target just people who live along Green Street and University Avenue. I looked at the City of Urbana Municipal Code this afternoon and I saw that there was a nuisance in Chapter 11, there was vegetation as a nuisance, a whole section on that. And things like, you know, grass getting to be eight inches or higher or invasive plants, things like that are considered nuisances that the homeowner would be required to deal with on the city parkway. And I looked and I didn't see any geographical limitation there. It was the whole city. It didn't say just these streets, just green or university or Pennsylvania or anything like that. There was no limitation. So I think that would make more sense for a snow removal ordinance. If you want maximum safety of pedestrians, you want the snow removed from all the sidewalks. And so that would be the most safe alternative. If you're looking for the most bang for the buck, I again would suggest that around schools would be a good place. I remember walking home one day with one of my sons who slipped on what was a frozen river of ice, half a block from Lille School. It would've been nice if there was some sand on that, it would've been nearly impossible to take it up, but that would, I think, be most bang for the buck. And I suggest to you that a distant third alternative would be to require owners along Green Street and University Avenue to clear their sidewalks, given that people, even if they come to the buses, let's say that's along the EMCOR-improved Green Street corridor, would still be marching through snow to get there, either from the north or from the south. And then they'd get to Green Street and they'd wait for a bus, I assume. So that doesn't seem particularly efficient to me, just to have Green Street cleared and none of the arterials that lead to Green Street. So that's what I'd like to say to you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Question?
So, yes, so you would support the ordinance if it were expanded to cover all the streets in Urbana?
Yeah, then I wouldn't feel picked on.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fine. And if everybody was subject to a 24-hour limitation of how long they could do it and had the same, faced the same set of fees, then I couldn't complain. Then it'd be just like the vegetation ordinance, which is, again, citywide.
Okay, thank you very much. Dan Newman, speaking on snow removal.
Hi, my name's Dan Newman. I've lived at 612 West Green Street for a little over 11 years. When deciding what I think about the proposed amendment, I have three core values. First is safety of pedestrians. Second is fairness to the residents of Urbana. And the third is efficiency of snow removal. First, with regard to safety, I agree that the sidewalks should be regularly cleared of snow to maintain the pedestrian safety. The norm that all homeowners should clear their sidewalks is a valuable one in our community because it keeps the people safe. Second, with regard to fairness, I note that the norm to clear sidewalks is being selectively enforced. Some homeowners face no penalty for the failure to remove snow, whereas other homeowners face a penalty of around $150 if the snow is not removed within 24 hours. How do we decide who should and should not be penalized? Fairness is an issue when deciding how two houses, both of which commit the exact same infraction, receive grossly different penalties. Why shouldn't snow removal enforcement be equal across streets? If we attempt to differentially or unequally enforce snow removal norms for some houses and not others, then the rationale should be very strong. In the current case, that rationale is not strong. For instance, Green Street does not have more pedestrian traffic than some other streets in Urbana, like Illinois Street, which are not being included in the proposed expansion. It does not seem fair that my house on Green Street is being targeted for strict enforcement, but houses on Illinois that have even greater pedestrian traffic are spared any potential fines after committing the same infraction. Are there data on how many pedestrians actually use the major sidewalks in Urbana, on Illinois Street, Springfield, Washington, Florida, Green, and Pennsylvania Streets? If pedestrian safety is really the impetus for amending the snow removal ordinance, then the proposed corridors should be the ones that have the most pedestrian traffic. It's my understanding that the basis for singling out Green Street is the EMCOR project, which is a $5 million investment on the segment between Bucy and Race, and which will result in a new street, new sidewalks, removal of trees, and some addition of bus shelters. This is a major investment in the hope of creating more future traffic on Green Street. It is not clear whether pedestrians will increasingly choose Green over the other streets that they are currently choosing after the addition of bike lanes and bus stops to Green. For example, bus travelers often walk from parts of the neighborhood south of Green or from parts of the neighborhood north of Green to arrive at bus stops on Green Street and then take the bus rather than walking down Green Street itself. The reason that this matters is because the basis for this decision about which corridors to add to the snow removal district and the snow removal ordinance is not based on actual data on current pedestrian traffic, nor is it based on actual knowledge of future pedestrian traffic. It is rather based on a hope, not yet substantiated, that adding bike lanes and bus stops will increase pedestrian sidewalk traffic on Green. Further, regardless of the current data or lack of data about actual pedestrian sidewalk use of Illinois, Springfield, Washington, Florida, Green, and Pennsylvania Streets, the decision to enforce snow removal on one street and not others is essentially an extra tax being placed on the private residents of one street. This does not seem fair to me. If this were your street being singled out, what would you and your neighbors think? Also, would the city consider placing this sort of ordinance or enforcement on all of Urbana? Would there be too much pushback about the $150 charge and the 24-hour enforcement? What is fair? My third point is about efficiency, but it's also related to the first point about safety. If you accept that it has recently become the city's priority to clear the sidewalks for pedestrians along Green Street specifically, then the proposed amendment is still not the best method for securing pedestrian safety. The proposed amendment relies on 40 or more independent property owners to each come out and shovel their lengths of sidewalk at the same time. And not everyone is able to shovel or able to shovel on short notice. In my case, it would mean hiring someone to drive to my house, shovel 40 feet of walkway, and then drive home every time it snows, even if I'm out of town, even if I'm on a work trip, et cetera. A much more efficient and more reliable approach would be to have a single contractor with a snow blower walk down the seven blocks of Green Street and clear off everything all at once. This would be the best approach for pedestrian safety by far because it would ensure that the entire length of sidewalk is clear at once. It would also be much less costly, if I'm thinking on behalf of the community as a whole, than having 40 or more independent property owners each hire a separate contractor to clear off separate sections of walkway. 20 seconds. In all seriousness, the costs, 20 seconds?
Yes, you may have 20 seconds.
In all seriousness, the cost recouped by having a small increment in our taxes as part of snow removal to pay for snow removal would be much more efficient. For me, the small cost in taxes would be well worthwhile compared to paying somebody to drive to my house to shovel off the sidewalk after every snowfall. If cost is the issue, I would much rather pay for a portion of a single contractor with a snow blower rather than paying someone to travel to my house to shovel every time it snows. Under this scenario, the single contractor arrangement would save me a lot of money in the long run. The city owns the sidewalk. The city is now saying it's in the city's best interest to place special enforcement on having a clear sidewalk on Green Street, much more than it prioritizes clear sidewalks on other streets, including other streets with higher pedestrian traffic. If this is true, the city should hire a single contractor to clear off the entire street and then charge us the portions of this cost via taxes. This arrangement would be far more efficient, faster, more reliable, less costly for citizens, far safer for pedestrians, and far more fair. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question for you.
Yeah, I'll go into detail later about the safety issues. It's not necessarily about somebody slipping on the sidewalk. But as far as the traffic, pedestrian traffic goes, we have some, we have a few dozen intersections where they've counted pedestrian traffic. But also, I do believe that the 740 people every day, on average, that board a bus or get off a bus on Green Street should count as pedestrians. They don't really have a choice to walk a different route, even though they may be coming from the north or south, they have to at some point walk on the sidewalk at Green Street, even if it's just a few hundred or a few yards or 100 yards or a block, and they have to wait there. So if the sidewalks aren't clear and they end up waiting in the street, then I think that could be a problem. But my question was, you keep saying that Illinois Street has more pedestrian traffic than Green Street. Do you have any way of knowing that?
Do I have any way of knowing that Illinois Street? Yeah, I don't know the data on how people travel. I do know that I walked to campus for six years. I live on Green Street and I walked down Kohler to Illinois to take Illinois over to campus because it's much more convenient and more pleasant to walk.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Cynthia Hoyle.
Thank you all for letting me speak with you tonight. And I would like to say upfront how a great job our city crews do clearing streets. Apparently the-
Sydney, can you pull the mic in?
The first year I lived here, I was on the top of the list and I was dumbfounded by how fast my streets were cleared. The next year, it changed. But anyway, I wanted to just present a little more information to you on this topic and say that I certainly would be in favor of having this ordinance extended to the entire city, but at this point, I would like to say that having major bus corridors and Safe Routes to School would be a priority for me if we wanted to expand based on that basis because we do have a high number of people in this community who walk by and take the bus for trips to school, work, et cetera. And this is what happens when those sidewalks are not clear. This is on Lincoln Avenue. This is on Washington at Philo. This is on Florida. This is also on Washington. This was one afternoon. I went out and took pictures in 2014. This is what happens often to the ramps for the sidewalks. Wheelchair people, using wheelchairs simply cannot use it. This is what our bus stops end up looking like. So one of the things I wanted to say from questions based on my email to you was about where I got the data or the information about other communities that requires clearing of snow. And that was from a staff report done by the City of Champaign staff from 2007 when this first came up. And so it also went through and talked about how often there's heavy snowfalls that actually result in these ordinances being put into effect, that you should expect at least two events a year for that to happen. They looked at other Big Ten cities and all of them except for Champaign and Urbana have ordinances requiring snow. There are different kinds and different timeframes. And then they looked at 12 cities in Illinois and found they had snow removal ordinances. I lived in Oklahoma before I moved here. They required removal of snow from sidewalks. And Oklahoma is not a state in which people do much walking or taking a buses. Some of the concerns I've heard expressed are about people who cannot remove snow. We do have a Snow Angel program. I'll talk about that a little bit more to assist and the city could certainly partner with us on that. Clearing the snow is too expensive or difficult. As was mentioned earlier, we do require people to mow grass. That happens many more times a year than snow removal. And mowers are more expensive and more dangerous than snow removal equipment. The question about what if I'm not in town, people make arrangements for their grass to be mowed when they're not in town. We also have neighbors that we rely on for those kinds of things, house sitters, et cetera. So I think that there are ways to deal with that. So what is the Snow Angel program? Those are volunteers who clear snow from sidewalks, driveway entrances, et cetera. And I have examples from some other cities. I'm not going to spend time reading this to you, but they often are set up to help elderly and disabled folks who do not have the ability to clear snow, although I have to say that in this community, those are not the people I see with uncleared sidewalks. They already do take care of their sidewalks. They usually hire someone or their neighbors help them. We help our neighbor. Lawrence, Kansas has a program like this and some of these are city-based, some of these are volunteer-based. They vary a lot. I have a whole presentation on this, which I don't have time to give you tonight. Lincoln, Nebraska has one, very similar to ours. And their Public Works and Utilities staff helps some with phone calls from seniors who request help. And churches assist with those programs. This program, I thought, was really very interesting, using students in New Jersey. And we would love to partner with student organizations to do this. And Arbor has a very different program. They community-funded some equipment and volunteers operated it and they had 12 volunteer drivers. I don't know how they organized all that, but I'm sure we could find out. This is what our map for Urbana looks like and you can sign up for a block or if you can't do a whole block, you can sign up for half a block. And we've been running this program for several years now. I have some money this year through my Safe Routes to School grant to also buy equipment for people who might like to help that don't have shovels, hats, or gloves. These are what our yard signs look like that we provide to people who clear their sidewalks. And it's about encouraging people and developing a culture. The State Street Neighborhood has a very good culture of this and their sidewalks are almost all cleared. Neighbors help neighbors. That's what we're looking for. You can't do this by enforcement alone. This has to be a program where people do it together. That's my last slide, so I have perfect timing. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Cynthia. Sharice.
Do the Snow Angels work all through the city? Because what I noticed was that there was nothing from the north end of Urbana.
Oh, there is some on the north end of Urbana. What we did is we took the, I just didn't, this is a screenshot of our map. We do have, we've used the Safe Routes to School routes, major bus corridors, and so we do have routes around King and the Safe Routes to School program for that area. Sorry, I didn't pull the map in, but it was hard to see when I zoomed it out and made it smaller. But yes, it does include those, it does include every sidewalk in the city, although we would certainly be willing to let someone clear the sidewalk in front of their house if it's not on our map. We do these routes so that if someone volunteers to do it, someone else doesn't go out and find someone already cleared it. It's mostly about avoiding duplication of efforts. So far, we haven't been, you know, we haven't had that problem in terms of our volunteers.
Okay, thank you. Eric.
Did you happen to notice what Burlington, Vermont does?
You know, I think I might have something on Burlington, Vermont. I'd have to go back and look. I did a survey years ago. This, when I moved here in 2001, I was so dumbfounded, I started lobbying right away to have this ordinance passed. And so I've been working on that over the years and I might have what they do. Do you know what they do?
Yeah.
Oh, tell us.
They, a few years ago, they got a mayor who looked at the city being paralyzed by the snow and said, no, we're going to clear all the sidewalks. And they have done so ever since. And take note, Mayor Marlin, Burlington's a college town, same population as ours, and that's what really propelled him to national fame.
Any other questions for Cynthia?
I think you all have a copy of our flyer, by the way. I wanted everybody to have one. I have some extra copies if anybody in the audience would like to have one about how to sign up. We'll be doing some advertising this year since we have the grant. And I will say that when we do the advertising, we do get more sidewalks cleared. I've noticed that people just don't think about it. And there's also this myth out there that if you clear your sidewalk, you're open to being sued if someone slips on your sidewalk, which is a myth.
Is there a phone number for folks who aren't online?
We have not set it up with a phone number at this point. If we wanted to expand it, we could try and set that up, but we have not had a number that we could identify as being staffed to address this on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you. Sharice had one more question.
The one slide that you showed that had the volunteer sixth grade through eighth grade kids?
Yes, the Fairhaven, New Jersey.
And I guess my question is, because I'm not sure, in some school districts, I'm not sure if Urbana does this or not, they're required to do community service. So would your Snow Angels program be up for some kind of credit toward community service if the sixth graders and the 12th graders were required to do community service stuff to do for graduation?
Yeah, we would be, I have a certificate. In fact, I give to any college students that ask me for one when they volunteer, like at one of our bike rodeos, for example, because they are required to do, like sororities and fraternities have to do a certain number of service hours, and then there are some degree programs that have things like that or classes. And so, yes, we would be happy to provide people with that. I don't think that we have a community service requirement in our schools, although there's some student organizations that have that, particularly at the high school. And that's one of the reasons I included money in our grant this time, is so that they could have equipment. And on the form, when you fill it out, we have a space that says if you need equipment, let us know and we'll try and get back in touch with you to find out what you need. And also, the group that does a lot of work, CU Fair, I'm trying to remember the name of it. Last year, I had contact from the organization where some of the homeless go out and do community service work or work for pay. And he contacted me because he was interested in his folks working on this. So we've expanded it. We have a Champaign map now as well.
And just as an aside, are there any leaf angels type of organizations?
No, although every fall, I have this discussion in social media that, no, it's not a good idea to leave all your leaves on your yard because they blow into the street and block our drains and they blow onto the sidewalks and make it slippery. So, you know, it's okay to leave your leaves if they won't blow away, but yes, I would say that the thing to do there is send a request out. But yes, I would say that the thing to do there is send a request out via social media. I know there are a number of young people willing to do leaf removal for a very low price.
Okay. Put it on Facebook. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Evan Alvarez from the CU Mass Transit District.
Hello. My name's Evan Alvarez. I'm the Special Services Manager from Champaign, oh, sorry, from Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit. As Mr. Brown referenced, everyone who gets off of the bus for some point of their journey becomes a pedestrian or becomes a pedestrian on their way to the bus. So, we view pedestrian accessibility as a large part of our community's general accessibility. And to that effect, I do have a short letter from our Managing Director, Carl Gannat, that I would like to read. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District would like to express its support for the proposed expansion of the area included in the Urbana Snow Removal District. As you know, MCD is a strong advocate for improving the safety of our roadways for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit riders. Serving as the lead applicant agency for the MCOR grant, MCD has worked hard to provide access for all city residents that is safe, convenient, and affordable. The upcoming MCOR construction of Green Street will provide much-needed improvements to the sidewalk roadway and bus stops while also installing a new bike lane that will connect to downtown Urbana with the University of Illinois. University Avenue is undergoing a major safety upgrade undertaken by the Illinois Department of Transportation in the next year or so that will similarly improve sidewalks, ramps, bus stops, and intersections for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders. Including Green Street and University Avenue as areas in which snow removal will be required will help close a significant gap in access to sidewalks for pedestrians and transit riders during snow events. Both of these corridors are multimodal corridors with many people walking and using transit. When sidewalks are blocked due to snow, people end up in the street waiting for buses. It is not a safe place for pedestrians, given the speed and volume of vehicles. MCD often receives phone calls from residents who rely on transit for their mobility when it snows, who are unable to access the bus stop due to obstructed sidewalks. MCD is very diligent in clearing all bus shelters, but cannot clear all sidewalks leading to bus stops. MCD has also provided significant financial support for many years to the CU Safe Routes to School project and the Snow Angel Program to improve safety for people walking, biking, and taking buses. We plan to continue to provide this support into the future. Thank you for supporting safety for people walking and taking buses in our community. Sincerely, Carl P. Gannat, Managing Director, CEO. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Rock.
Thanks, Mayor Marlin. Thanks, Council. So, I'm going to read a bit of what I sent when this was initially presented, and then also sort of talk a little bit contemporaneously. So, I support the expansion of the sidewalk clearance ordinance. A lack of cleared sidewalks represents a burden for residents in Urbana that depend on walking and CU MCD for their transit. As a young, able-bodied person, I have had trouble with iced-over sidewalks, creating an unsafe environment. On more than one occasion, I have literally fallen down because of iced-over sidewalks that I couldn't see. For an elderly person or a person with disabilities, the lack of snow clearance can represent an impassable barrier to their normal mobility. While I understand the desire to avoid creating an undue burden for property owners or an unfair ordinance, the reality is that lack of widespread sidewalk clearance represents a burden for pedestrians throughout the winter months. In the winter, I often have to make decisions between walking on an uncleared sidewalk or walking in the road, and see others making similar choices frequently. While clearing a sidewalk does represent an additional task for a property owner, the requirement to keep a sidewalk clear is no more onerous than the requirement to keep a yard mode. The concern that was stated at the time of the initial presentation was that sidewalks, snow removal services don't exist. I understand that that is the case currently, but the lack of such a service is not representative of lack of, is representative of the lack of demand rather than the impossibility providing such services. Snow removal companies in Chicago frequently advertise sidewalk services, and they started doing that after the 2015 ordinance that required snow removal across the city. I would like to say that the comment earlier about more, about doing this where there's most pedestrian traffic, or I would like to sort of push back on that a little bit. Sidewalk clearance, there are certain streets in the City of Urbana that are somewhat safer for pedestrians to walk on the street if sidewalks are unclear. The CU MCD comment got at it a little bit. Green Street's not one of those streets. People drive relatively quickly on the street because it is a main thoroughfare. Providing segregated pedestrian and car areas is an important part of maintaining safety for pedestrians in streets where there's high-speed traffic or more traffic. On streets like Illinois, where I do enjoy walking, I'm much less afraid to walk in the street if a sidewalk isn't fully cleared because there's, the chances are that there's going to be less traffic and that the traffic will be moving somewhat slower. So, there is sort of a trade-off here that has to be made where you can actually mix the traffic when it comes to pedestrians, cyclists, and cars, as long as the streets maintain a slow rate of speed. And so, one of the things that we need, one of the things that's worth thinking about, and I would be happy to support a more widespread sidewalk clearance ordinance. I wrote an email in January of last year asking for a sidewalk clearance for the entire city of Urbana. But there is, I understand that there is trade-off here with regards to deciding where to do this and deciding not, in terms of enforcement and such. So, yeah, I mean, I support this. I think it'd be a really good thing. And I do think that people would choose to walk on Green Street if there were cleared sidewalks and it was safe to do so. So, I mean, there's an induced demand here. Thank you.
Thank you. With two other input cards, one is from Chandra, and I, I'm sorry, but I can't read the last name.
Bishop.
Bishop. She doesn't wish to speak, but wants position to be entered into the record as being in support of the snow removal ordinance. And a card from Wayne Williams, who also chooses not to address members, but asks that his position be entered into the record as snow removal should be required citywide. Is there anything, anyone else who wants to address the council? Okay. That completes public input and finished business. Seeing none, reports of the Committee of the Whole. Sharice.
Okay. Last week, we had two ordinances on the table for, sent to the City Council. The first one is ordinance number 201910060, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 11, Section 11-65, removing snow from sidewalks and other areas. And Dean.
I am going to make a motion that we kick this back to Committee of the Whole for further discussion, because I don't want to see this ordinance just live or die the way it is. I think that we can tweak it to maybe come to some type of resolution, maybe some type of incentive program or neighborhood come together where we could all throw in $5 to hire one service for the whole neighborhood or something. But I don't want to see it just live or die the way it is. So, I'd like to make a motion to kick it back to Committee of the Whole for further brainstorming.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's moved by Dean, seconded by Dennis. Discussion. Eric.
So, I intend to vote in favor of this motion. At this moment, I'm completely prepared to argue for extending the ordinance citywide. I think if everybody in the city had to, you know, really had to remove the snow from their sidewalks, suddenly there might really be a constituency for the Burlington Plan, which has the city do it. And it's been working ever since the 1980s there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Bill.
Yeah. We discussed this for at least three meetings at the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting over the past year. One reason we have advisory commissions is to thoroughly discuss issues and try to come up with the most practical, achievable goals in the short term. And sure, the council should think in the long term and think about doing additional things. But I think at this time, what the BPAC saw was a staff that is burdened, has a lot of work to do, and we were very conscious of the staff time that would be involved in enforcement. So, that's why we really narrowed it down to what we felt was absolutely the minimum level of expansion that we should have. And let me just go into it a little bit. I understand if you haven't been following the issue over the past year or so, some confusion, some, makes it look like it's unfair to have your street kind of singled out. But the fact is, the MCOR project that will be spending $5 million on that one segment of Green Street to rebuild the street, rebuild the ramps, improve the sidewalks, add three bus shelters with the fancy directional, when the bus is coming things. What do you call those? I don't know. Kiosk, yeah. It's going to be really nice, but it's also going to have two, it's going to have bike lanes. It'll be the only connection, actually, between Race Street and Lincoln Avenue, the only street that we have bike lanes on. People think Urbana is so big on bike lanes. Go look for a bike lane between Race Street and Lincoln Avenue. There aren't any. But there will be some on Green Street. And when you have bike lanes, especially at night, you don't want people standing in the, in the lane, waiting for a bus. Not only could the people get hit by a car, the bicycle has to go out around the people and might not check behind them and might not have their blinkers on. And you know, half the students don't have very good blinkers anyway. So, I think we really were careful about determining which areas we wanted to expand this in. The campus, north campus area is the highest density population outside of, outside of the residence halls, where the university's already plowing sidewalks there. It's most concentrated residential population that we have on the north campus area and along university where there's been some new construction, too. The traffic, the vehicular traffic on Green Street compared to Illinois Street is about double. We don't have exact pedestrian counts in the middle of the block. We do have counts at Lincoln, and according to the map, both Lincoln and Illinois have between 100 and 400 pedestrians at those intersections at the peak hour. But we also know that the 741 average people that get on and off the bus on Green Street should be counted as pedestrians, and we don't have that on Illinois Street. So, I would strongly argue that even if all you're looking at is pedestrian traffic, Green Street's a good candidate. But then, when you throw in the improvements, the bicycle lanes, and, you know, all the money we're going to be putting into that to improve this corridor, I think it's a reasonable thing to ask there. I haven't really heard any arguments against the northern downtown area, so presumably people are okay with that. So, it sounds like, if anything, the council might be debating whether to make this citywide or not. I think, you know, it'd be nice to have citywide. The intention of BPAC at this time, really, we've been focusing a lot on safety, especially because bicycle and pedestrian fatalities nationwide have been going up. Locally, Urbana had five fatalities in the most recent five-year period. Champaign had two during that same five-year period with twice the population. Pedestrian fatalities are on our mind, pedestrian serious injuries. So, I think that's the main focus where we were looking at this. If you want to talk about citywide sidewalk removal, or citywide snow removal on sidewalks, let's not remove the sidewalks. We can do that, but I don't see any reason to delay this ordinance, which is ready. Also, if you want to postpone enforcement on Green Street and university until, for another year, that's when the projects are supposed to be done. I'd be okay with that. I don't think that would require council action. I think you could ask, direct the mayor to delay enforcement for a year on those two Or the mayor could probably decide on her own. I don't know. We have a strong mayor.
Capable of deciding things.
So, I think we should vote this down or withdraw the motion. It's a little strange to even have the motion, because typically, when you get a report from committee, the first motion is for approval of the ordinance. Whether or not we've sent it with, with recommendation for approval or not, it's always the first motion. But if you want to discuss this motion, we can do that. I just want to vote it down. The other reason Green Street is doable is it has wide parkways, so that there are places to put the snow, there's places for the plows to put the snow. Not so much on university, that's going to be a little more challenging. But that was one reason, one thing that we considered that enforcement, say, on Cunningham would be hired, because there's not many places for the plows to put snow. And then, the city ends up having to do a lot of abatement and a lot of enforcement there, and we just don't have the staff for that. I don't think it's unfair. You know, there's a lot of things in our city where we've removed parking, we've removed street parking for bicycle lanes for safety reasons. Some people have to pay for street parking overnight, other people get free street parking, other people never had street parking. So, there's a lot of kind of accidents of locations that may seem like it's unfair in one regard, but it's mostly when the, when the circumstances change, you feel like it's unfair. But then, after that, it's just the way it is. I think that's covered most of my issues. I probably used up more than my allotted time, but I'm going to vote against this one.
Any other discussion? Dean.
I don't interpret this as us deciding whether or not we're going to go citywide or not. I interpret this as, can we cut Green Street off of this in a discussion later at Committee of the Whole, or can we come up with an incentive program or something like that? If I think that this has got the possibility of going citywide, there's no way I'm going to vote for it. I live on a corner. I have two very long sidewalks in front of my house. I've been on crutches three times in the last three years. I have elderly neighbors. There's no way in hell I'm going to vote for a citywide $150 fine for a 24-hour snow removal. I would be open to discussing ways to modify this so that it's maybe more fair to the people that live on Green Street. When you two gentlemen moved, how long have you guys lived on Green Street there?
20 years, eleven and a half.
When you moved there, were these the terms that you entered that neighborhood under?
No.
I rest my case.
Do you want your motion to stand, or would you like to withdraw that and we'll start over?
No, I'm standing my motion. I just wanted to make my comments about it.
Mary Alice, and then Sharice.
So, one of the things, Carol, thank you very much for putting together such a thorough summary of all the questions the council had. So, for those of you who aren't aware, Carol gave us three different maps. There was a map of Green Street in terms of the types of parcels that were there. There was a map of the city sidewalks that are cleared in terms of the order, right? And then, the last one was the number of sidewalks that were cleared by the university north of Springfield. So, for those three things, I, as I looked at that and kind of zeroed in on Green Street, I saw that, I counted the segments of the blocks. So, right now, the city clears the area around, I believe, the township and also by the Urbana Free Library. So, if you continue down that road and you cover the blocks that are single-family residents, that adds 10 blocks. And not, when I say blocks, I don't mean all four sides of a block. I mean segments. So, 10 segments of, so, I'm going to call that a mile, just, just for, I don't know if it's a mile, but it's roughly a mile if you just clear those blocks. And I do hear the residents in terms of fairness, and that does concern me. So, my suggestion, and I think perhaps this is why Dean is asking to send it back to committee, my suggestion would be, if we're going to bid this out anyway, let's add those 10 blocks that have the single-family. If it's literally going to cost us $1,000 each snow event, that's $2,000 to $3,000 a year. I mean, that's, that's affordable. So, we can have this conversation at committee, we can have the conversation now, but that's just kind of my suggestion moving forward. I would also like to say that, for whatever reason, pedestrians don't always understand what a bike lane is. I ride my bike every morning, and every single day, there are pedestrians in the bike lanes, and it's really annoying when you're And it's really annoying when you're locked in and there are, there are actual curbs on either side of you on a bike lane and you can't get out. So, so I understand that. It's, it drives me a little batty and I wish I had a horn on my bike so I could just like, you know, honk at them. But I, I do understand that concern.
If I could just, I just want to be sure that, that what I wrote to you was clear. The $1,000 a mile figure came from a report that was provided back in 2011, and it was an estimate. And, and what I had, what I had suggested was that we're going, when we put out for bid this more ad hoc, when we need some, when we, when we are enforcing non-compliance in the existing districts and we have someone who doesn't comply, they get their, their notification, another 24 hours goes by and we have to abate that, that that would be this more ad hoc thing and that we'll, when we bid that out as an alternative, we'll bid out, you know, a, a per-mile cost or, or whatever. So at the moment, it's an unknown.
Sure.
On two, two counts. One is will anybody bid on it? And secondly, how much? So I just wanted to be clear about that.
No, absolutely. And I understand. I mean, I guess my point was we're already going to be asking them to start from Race Street because Township and Lincoln and the, and the Urbana Library is right there and we clear those. So, does that make sense?
I have to clarify one other thing then. So all the things on the map in terms of what the city clears that are city properties or city-related properties, we use our staff for that. It's this other piece.
I see. So you're not talking about contracting out all of the clearing?
That's correct.
But that is something that we could ask to be contracted out? And then you would save some of the staff time? If they literally just went down Green Street, you know, from, from Race to Lincoln?
Yeah. I, I, we have, we have more to learn about the availability of services to do this.
Right, right. And I, I guess, you know, MCOR is not gonna be done for a year and a half, two years or something. I'm just wondering if we can use that time. So that, those are my comments.
Jared?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sharice.
Okay. What, what I wanted to say was, and I don't know about other neighborhoods so much as I know about my own, when the, when the snow plows go out, they totally cover our sidewalks, the snow does. So at least I know in front of my area, my house. And it's not that I don't want the plows to plow snow. I do. But you can, we, as, in our neighborhood, because we didn't originally have sidewalks, our sidewalks are closer to what the curb is. So when the plows go out and they plow the snow, that, you have that little angle of snow that goes right onto our sidewalks. And that would mean that we would have to wait until the snow is plowed, if it, if it's a huge snow event, before we could even begin to dig ourselves out of the sidewalk, on the sidewalk. And so it would be an issue, I know, in Ellis subdivision, and for many in Ellis subdivision, because there is no easement between the street and the sidewalk. There's no, there's no grass on several, in several parts of the property. It's just the sidewalk. And I think that's the same thing when I was looking at pictures going down Lincoln Avenue of, that's, that's the issue as well. So to me, there are other issues that need to be addressed. Also, before we, you know, if we're talking about doing a, a citywide ordinance to, if, if that's going to come up at all, a city, a citywide ordinance. I, I agree with Dean in the sense that, you know, we need to discuss, there's other things to be discussed. If, if, he said he wouldn't go for a citywide ordinance. I don't have a problem necessarily because I see the fairness of it. But I also see the difference in different subdivisions and neighborhoods within the city and the, and the issues that they would have. Another thing that I wanted to say is that the MCOR project, as Mary Alice said, is going to take a couple of years before it is completed. We don't quite know what the end result regarding snow removal is going to be by the time that's Maybe, you know, or how, how that's going to affect the pedestrian, the pedestrian traffic on any street, let alone streets that we're talking about making this ordinance adhere to. So I, I think we have to be more forward-thinking in regarding that. Because Bill was talking about the, the bicycle lanes and so on and so forth. Well, bicycle lanes on Green Street will be cleared. There will be no parking on bicycle lanes. So we don't have to worry about that. Therefore, we, we really don't know and there's going to be some things taken out. We don't know how close the curb is gonna be to the sidewalks that are already there, how they're going, at least I don't, because I'm, I'm not a city engineer or civic engineer or anything like that. So I'm not sure how, how after the state does what it's going to do, how that's going to affect the pedestrian walkways on Green Street. I would put off doing this this year and see what happens next year. The weather changes, we've got a lot of climate change that's happening. We don't know if we're getting more snow, less snow, how, how that's gonna work. I guess we can always plan for two snow events a year as the, the information was given. But I do think that there needs to be more discussion.
Jared, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a question to Carol. If we have consulted with the university about what they, anything with them about their sidewalk removal program? Because, man, I can't even imagine how many miles of sidewalks they've gotta clear. Every snow event. I mean, they're out there with those trucks and those little John Deere tractors, 24/7 it seems like, trying to get every little pathway for the students cleared. They gotta, if we calculate that out, it might be, maybe not comparable because they've got union guides or whatever doing all that work. But it might be a place to start to look at trying to think about what we would need. I don't think there's, I would highly doubt that there would be enough public support to pass a citywide thing with a fee. I think the only way we would get citywide is by advertising a tax that people would have to pay in order to allow the city to accomplish that on behalf of folks. I don't think there's enough support for people to be risking a fine and let us get away with doing that to them. Those are my, just my two comments for this. Before we go, go to other folks and Dean responds, I think sending, I don't think there's any reason to send this back to committee for further discussion. I think we've got a clear vision of we need to explore a broader concept. And I think that we need to vote on this ordinance in, in and of itself tonight. If we all feel like it's not comprehensive enough and we're not willing to do it by piecemeal and we gotta look at a big picture, then we just gotta say that by voting down the ordinance rather than sending back to committee because we're just gonna have the same discussion again next week.
I would, I would interject here. I just want to get a sense, a straw poll. It seems like no one has an issue with the area between Springfield University, Lincoln and Wright, and the area north of downtown. And so the areas of contention appear to be the segments of University Avenue and Green Street, both of which will be under construction if things work right next year. And is, I just would want a sense, maybe a straw poll, is there support on the council for approving the two blocks on your map? And then considering the other options separately?
Yes.
How many, how many would support something like that?
That, that makes sense to me.
Is that one, two, three, four?
I don't know which map you're...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
My points of contention are single-family dwellings.
Well, this would be, the, the main, the areas under contention seem to be on Green Street and university, so. So it seems there's, there's support on the council for getting this done tonight and then we can look at the bigger picture. Dennis, do you want to comment?
Yeah.
And that's what Dennis recommended last week, actually.
Everybody else has had an opportunity to make a comment about it. Yeah, I don't have a problem with extending snow removal on the, what are basically commercial and business corridors on North Race Street, North Broadway, and Vine Street between university and Water on the east side of the map that we show. I don't have a particular opinion about the west side, except that the corner of Lincoln and university is becoming a highly-used corner. And snow removal there seems appropriate. But in my observation, university is basically a car corridor. And I have almost never seen people walking east and west on university avenue. Very few people do. It's not a, people are crossing university, but they're not traversing it. There's a lot of, there's the hospital and businesses along university, which I would expect would be self-motivated to clear their walkways for their customers, maybe not for all the businesses. There's also, there's also park district property along the south side. We are seeing some additional construction in the, we will in the future. But because of the improvements that we're, that are, seem to be motivating these decisions, haven't even broken ground yet, the MCOR project is not gonna be completed until probably winter next year, if then. And university avenue, it's, it's being conducted by the state to do those improvements. And I, I haven't seen any final date that they'll be done. So I don't think that's important right now to include the two arterial streets, Green Street and university avenue, at this time. And it was interesting, Cynthia Hoyle brought up the fact that she had concern for those areas where students walk in the safe routes to schools area. And it would seem to me that it would be, have been of use for BPAC to have addressed snow removal requirements in those areas to assist the students to get to school. And it'd be more likely that that would be a significant destination to place snow removal than college-age students walking to and from their campus destinations. And I would have to agree that I see more traffic using, using Illinois Street. And I don't real, well, I mean, I know there are bus stops along Green Street, but I'm not convinced that it's a fair and equitable choice for this time. So I'm fine with waiting or maybe voting for the northern section of, between Race and Vine Street and Wright and Lincoln. But I'm, I'm, I don't think that we're ready yet to make decisions about the arterial streets, university and Green Street. So, you know, you, we might separate the issue, but I think that I'm not gonna support any kind of decision for those streets in the near future.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor made by Dean, seconded by Dennis, to send it back to committee. Would you want to, would you be interested in modifying your motion to exclude those two streets and pass the rest?
I'd like to comment on the safe routes to school that Dennis asked about.
Sure.
BPAC did consider safe routes to school. We had an interactive map that showed every safe route to school, every sidewalk that the city shoveled, every sidewalk that the university shoveled. We looked at those maps. We talked quite a bit about safe routes to school because it is important. We decided it would be hard to enforce. It would also be hard to understand because they are kind of complicated maps. It wouldn't be an issue of just being able to say Green Street, university street, and these blocks, where people would understand that they're in the district. It would be kind of hit or miss. Safe routes to school has a very good program to encourage people to shovel. The other big difference is that in most cases, people, the kids are going to school in daylight hours. On campus, a lot of people are walking at night, a lot of people are walking inebriated at night. So, you know, I think the safety issues are, are greater there. Again, we were, we are concerned about safety. And I, I, you know, I would be disappointed to take out Green Street and university avenue. There were five pedestrian accidents in the 700 or 800 block of Green Street between Bucie and Lincoln Avenue in the past five years. None of them fatal. But...
Because of snow?
You know, I don't know that. What we look at is instead of waiting for accidents to happen, this is the new, the new paradigm. Apparently, up until recently, it's been popular to wait till accidents happen. After so many people die, you decide to do something. More recently, with some of the things that BPAC has been talking about, including Vision Zero that you'll hear more from us about, we're trying to use the past experience to predict what will happen. And I think it's predictable that more accidents happen when people have to walk in the street at night, especially if there's snow on the ground, especially if it's slick. So I don't know how many of those accidents happened at night or in snow, but I think it's predictable.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Mary Alice?
Can I offer an amendment?
You may.
All right. My, my amendment is to break off the area north of Springfield, south of university, Wright, and north Lincoln, and then extending the corridor for the downtown. I believe that's what you suggested.
Okay.
All right. Diane? Is that what you suggested?
Yeah.
All right. Because I, I don't know if the other will pass, but I, I think there perhaps might be more support for those two other areas.
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Charlie?
So who's second, if somebody's second?
Yeah, was, is there a second to that amendment?
I'll, I'll second Mary Alice's amendment.
My, my question is, okay, so you've got a motion to send this to, back to committee. Are you sending back to committee then the rest of, that's not covered here?
I would, yes, I would like to send back to committee the other part that's not covered because I'd like us to discuss, brainstorm a way to accomplish those goals without the fines. I'm not trying to kill that. I just don't like the fines. That's all.
Okay, I understand the, I understand the splitting then. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So what's up for a vote right now are the two block, the two areas?
Just split it first.
Okay. So, all right, there's been a motion and a second to split this out. Does this require a roll call?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion passes. Next.
Now we need to vote on the other one.
So, so now you, well, yeah, the way I understand this, you've, you've sent one part to, you've sent part of this to committee and now you've got a piece on the floor here, which I think has been, I, I think the motion has moved to approve that then, right? Does that include the motion? Yeah. And then Bill wanted to speak.
And we have a second.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on that piece?
Approving these two sections.
Without sending it to committee?
Correct.
We're gonna approve those sections now if we vote, yes.
And then these go back to committee.
Can I have point of clarification? Are those two votes or one vote?
One.
One?
You've already approved sending it to, by voice vote, you sent part of this to committee, I think.
No, I don't believe we ever voted on sending it back to committee.
We did. We voted on your amendment first.
Yeah, we voted on my amendment.
You're right, you're right.
So we voted on the amendment to split it.
Right, yeah.
And now we need to vote to either approve or deny?
Right. The motion would be to approve part and send part to committee. You're right, yes.
Do we need a new motion for that?
No, no, no. It's, it's the same motion.
Okay.
It's been amended. The motion's been amended. So now we're voting on to send it back to committee?
No, we're voting on whether or not...
The part that's contested.
What we're voting on, what you're voting on, is to send the stretch of university avenue between Lincoln and Race and the stretch of Green Street between Race and Lincoln back to committee. And then that's the first part. And then you're voting on approving, adding the two areas between university, Water, Vine and Race for snow clearing, and the area between Lincoln, Springfield, Wright, and university to the current... and University to the current required snow clearing.
I, I interpreted Dean's motion to go, to go back in committee and to discuss the whole issue more broadly. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, sir, and I want us to come up with a positive way for private homeowners to get them to do their snow. I think it's important, it's part of being a good neighbor. If they don't do it, you should give them the stink eye. But I, I'm not in on the fines because, because of the elderly people and things like that. So yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Dennis.
And it would also give us an opportunity to explore whether it's feasible to extend the city's plowing area to cover part, that part of Green Street, which Mary Alice Wu was pointing out.
Okay. Bill?
Just clarification on the fines, it's only $150 if you don't do anything for two or three days and really haven't tried to shovel your walk. I think sometimes people dread snow shoveling, as I do, because you're thinking of spending an hour out there, because you have a long driveway to clear. But really, if all you have to do is 60 feet of sidewalk, sometimes I'll do that first thing in the morning, then go to work, and then when I get back from work, since I walk or ride my bike, I probably wouldn't be riding my bike if I had six inches of snow, but then I, when I got home from work, I'd spend a long time cleaning my driveway. But really, to clean, to clear a walk, just takes a couple pushes of the snow, of the snow shovel, especially if you have one of those scoopers. So I do understand, you know, people have trouble, if they're older, they, they don't live in a neighborhood where you have neighbors that can help you out. And I, I think the city could, could work on increasing options, or making people, giving people connections to get things done, the volunteer programs, I think there's enough out there. I think there's a danger too of, if you start talking about, you know, if the city doing it, or charging a fee for a special service area, or raising a tax, or coming up with a tax to, to do it, there's already, on my block, I'd say 80% compliance. Citywide, it's probably less than that. But, you know, many hands make light work, and there's a lot of people already doing the things they're supposed to be doing. It's kind of penalizing them to make them pay a tax, because a minority of people won't, won't do it, or, or legitimately have trouble getting, getting out and doing it, and could use some help. So I think those are things to consider before you start talking about taxes. I'm still a little confused about what we're voting on, but I, I, I just want to emphasize that if we don't do something tonight, we'll lose the season, because you bring it back to committee, you're talking about another month or so, and you gotta give people enough time to, to plan. That's why I encouraged people to think, to go ahead and pass it tonight, and just delay enforcement on those two stretches. And if over the next year, we came up with something different, then you could have, could have proposed that.
Well, at this point, we have a motion on the floor for excluding those two sections of street, but passing the two blocks, two areas. One last comment, and then we'll vote.
Okay, my, my comment is basically this, only $150 does not fly with a lot of people. Only $150 for some folks is a lot of money. Well, you said something, it's only, and you, and you kind of, you know, pooh-poohed what people might, you know, they may not have $150, Bill, I'm just saying, so...
I can clarify the...
Yeah, could you clarify?
The, the fine. I think that the, the $150 came from a, a general sense of, the first, the fine itself, the first offense is $25. The way that we've done this in the past is that there's been an administrative fee, which is set at 55, and then there's the actual cost of the crew clearing it. So that might have been rounded to 150. The way that we'll do it, if we get someone to respond to our request for bids, is that the fine structure would stay the same, but then we would just simply pass through the cost of whatever we were charged for the, for that, that property owner's sidewalk to be cleared. There won't be an administrative fee anymore, because we're not, we're just passing on a cost.
So there would be a fine of $25, plus...
Plus the cost of abating.
The possible $50 that it would cost to be, so that's still $75.
I just wanted to...
I know, and I get that, and I, and I, and I, and I, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat anybody up about it, but even $75 for some people isn't, you know, makes a difference on whether or not they pay their heating bill, or get groceries, or something like that. So it could be, it very well could be a burden financially for someone to even have to do that. And I know that, you know, a lot of people think that's not true. I'm sorry, I've, I've, I guess when, if I'm going by my life experience, okay, and I know how I've had to struggle and have to choose between paying car insurance or my rent. So it's, it's one of those things where you never know how someone else's life is going to be, and paying the fine, and paying, and paying someone to shovel your walk could be, could possibly be a financial burden. So, you know, and I, I, I don't, we don't all live in, in a, in a, in a, in a neighborhood or commune type of atmosphere where many hands make light work. My mother used to say that too. So we don't all have those kind of advantages, or we don't all, we don't all know people that would do that. That's why I was asking, I'm so interested actually in the snow angels thing, in getting kids that go, that work with, in the school district, using that as community service. But it, it, it can pose an issue, so I do, I, I just wanted to comment on that, that it's not, it's not just, you know, paying a fee, it's, it's also finding someone, being able to find someone to do that for you if you cannot do it yourself.
Okay.
It can pose a problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and vote. What you're voting on are excluding Green Street, University Avenue, the two stretches, and including just the two areas indicated on the map.
Roll call.
And sending the Green Street and University back to committee.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
I still don't understand what I'm voting on.
You're voting to approve snow removal here and here, voting to send this and this back to committee.
I agree with one part, and I disagree with the other part.
It's a dilemma.
I thought that the amendment, oh, okay.
That's why I want to send it back to committee.
So...
Doesn't matter, I'll vote no.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I just wanted to add regarding the issue of pedestrians on University, that is the main route in the city in which pedestrian fatalities have occurred. It has become our high fatality corridor. So University is a problem in terms of safety. So that, I just wanted to point that out, that that's why this study was done by IDOT, and why the improvements are being made, is because we've had so many fatalities along University. There are a lot of pedestrians there, and a number of bus routes.
Carol?
I would like to ask whether it's possible, I, I don't know when, when you send it back to the committee of the whole, if that means the next meeting of the committee of the whole, but I'd like a chance to confer with our snow experts about when we thought we would have useful information, which we may not have for the next committee of the whole in terms of this soliciting interest in performing this work for us. So I would just ask that you give us time to get you some useful information.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, Sharice, you have one more ordinance to bring.
I get to talk again, okay. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2019-10061, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Two, Section Two dash two-seven, Rules for Deliberation, 2019, and that was brought by the city clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, motion to approve, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that seconded by Eric?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Sharice?
I think tonight is a perfect example of the problem that we have regarding presentations versus public input, and how we had some presentations during public input, and some presentations before public input, and I suppose, yeah, and I suppose what we need to do is, I don't know how we would determine, or does Charlie determine what, how long a presentation will take, or do we, how, how do we work that, Charlie? Because you wanted to put both of them together.
Yeah, well, the idea was that, you know, I thought tonight was a good example, you're right, we're talking about snow, so having the city's snow report before talking about the rest of the snow removal seemed to make sense. I think it's up to the council and the mayor, and the chair, the chair would make the first decision, and, and the committee, if it's in a committee, the committee chair would, would, would typically make a decision on the fly, but if council objected to that, council could override, or, you know, basically you have to use your judgment at each meeting, when they're, when they're paired up together.
Typically, present, when presentations are on the agenda as, as an item, it is presentations that have been invited, you know, we've invited people to make, or that they are staff presentations. So increasingly though, with the use of, you know, social media, et cetera, the public can also bring up a presentation on a thumb drive, and as long as they stay within their five minutes, it's considered part of public input. So we did have a number of very well-timed PowerPoints within that five-minute time, but the presentation that you heard from staff is the, a staff presentation.
Yeah, so my question is then, does, like, Ms. Hoyle, was that her name?
Mm-hmm.
Because she did her, her PowerPoint, and when I, when I looked at that, I looked at that as a presentation.
No, it was public input.
Well, I know it was, it, it was during, done during the public input time, but I'm, I'm also thinking in terms of, had she needed extra time, I would have been happy to give her the extra time to do her presentation, because it was a PowerPoint presentation, at least, that's kind of how I saw it.
Still public input.
Okay, so, I don't, I don't get it.
Mayor?
Yes, Dennis.
Yeah, and on that, if it says staff presentation, and you know what they're going to talk about, would it be very possible to place the topic of the presentation in, if there's going to be a staff presentation? Right now, it just says presentations, and now we had staff come and do a snow removal presentation. It would be nice to know that, not only what the topic is, but that, that it's a staff presentation.
That is actually what we've done in the past. I was informed that the snow report would be under, under staff reports of officers.
Oh.
And so, in my own notes, that's where it was listed. So, sorry, but I, I didn't get the message. I would have actually listed it as a presentation, had I known.
I mean, I think it's important for us to know...
Yes, we, which is what we've done, which we, we were doing in the past.
Especially when they come from staff.
Jared?
Sharice, I'd just comment to, when, if anybody needs more time, I'm sure it hasn't happened a ton since you've been on council, but I know in previous, lots of previous meetings, anytime anybody needed more time, we're pretty gracious, and all it takes is, you know, a motion and a second from two council members to allow them to have more time.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I'm just, all I'm saying is that...
You're not, we're never going to be able to differentiate between them all.
But I'm just saying, it seems like the, the rules, the change of the rules, deal with putting the two together, public input and presentation, together on the agenda, am I correct? Charlie?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we did, we didn't have a real place for presentations before.
Mm-hmm.
And putting a presentation before public input, you had a negative opinion of that, so I've tried to come up with something that reflects what is actual practice, which has been to mix presentations and public input, and, and as just generally public input, because presentations are essentially public input.
So that's, that's, that's why I was saying, I thought tonight was a good example of how the two seem to intermix. But I guess I was wrong, because you guys say it's all public input.
And I disagree. I think if it's coming from staff, that's not public input, that's staff input. Public input is when the people from the neighborhood come and talk to us.
So...
And we could certainly put the topic on, which we usually do. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Sharice, seconded by Eric. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of special committees. Okay. Reports of officers, we have one report, been discussed, and it will not be on snow.
Actually, I have two informational items.
Okay.
I'm going to start off, first of all, our purchasing policy requires any, any authorization, authorization of an emergency purchase outside of our normal policy. Once that's done and it's been approved, then I present that, and that's why I'm bringing this information. I provided everyone a memo regarding a boiler failure that we had in this facility. Our staff became aware of it back on October 8th, or one of two of the large boilers that provides heat for about two-thirds of this facility, had a critical failure, basically where replacement of that boiler, or repair of that boiler exceeded cost of, repairing would cost more than to put a new one in. So we decided, based upon a recommendation for pricing from our contractor, to go ahead and authorize replacing both of the two boilers. They work in conjunction with each other, basically it's two boilers, two stages each, and when we're on a full heating load in January and February, we require both of those boilers to provide heat. So the recommendation I provided to Carol and the mayor was to mitigate the risk of having a second failure, having to go through the process all over again, was to replace both of the, both of the boilers at the same time. And that was done at a cost of, let's see, $79,000, or I'm sorry, $78,750. So that work has been approved. Currently, we have one boiler set in place, we're working on the piping and venting for that, hopefully, so that by the time we get into December and January, in the cold frigid temperatures, we'll have both boilers in and operational, be able to maintain heat load to the, to the building. So I'm willing to take any questions, if there are any on that. Yes.
Were there any other bids, other than A&R? I was looking at this, and, you know, and you were, you're talking about getting two boilers, each, from what I have here, costing $39,570. And, and what did you say the cost, the end cost was going to be? Because it's different than what I have on my memo.
The, there were two options. The first option was just to replace one of the two boilers.
Mm-hmm.
To replace one boiler would have been approximately $39,000. But the two boilers are, are the exact same age, they're all, they were installed at the exact same time.
By these people?
By, no, this was done as part of the infill project, the remodeling, remodeling this building, I think 98, 99 is when they were both commissioned.
Mm-hmm.
So what we, what we ran the risk of is by only replacing one of the two, if the second boiler were to experience the same exact problem in December or January, the one boiler would not be able to maintain the heating load, and we wouldn't have occupant comfort throughout the building. Plainly putting it, it'd be cold in here.
Right.
So we thought while the, while the contractor was here and mobilized, and doing the work in the venting, the plumbing, and all the, you know, there are multiple pumps that loop that hot water through the system, it just was logical to mitigate the risk and just take care of, I mean, we'd be coming back and doing it next fiscal year anyway, it just made sense to do it now. Now, the reason for the emergency purchase was because we had to bypass the bid process. Normally during procurement, we'd hire a mechanical engineer, we'd do detailed specifications, we'd put that into, you know, our 38, 40-page-plus bid document, we'd advertise that for a minimum of 15 days, taking the bids, review it, and that process alone could be, you know, a month and a half, two months, from the time we got the bid out, to the time we actually awarded the contract. So obviously, with the lead time, the material and equipment it takes for them to come in... and do the work, we, being October 8th, and now already November, and the work is still under progress, had we stopped and taken the time to do any sort of bid, we run into the, we run into winter months without heat. So, we were, just really had our hand forced in to make this decision.
Okay, so, the contractors are already working here in the building to fix whatever whose...
Correct. We, we have a time of material contractor for, who we just call for, is whenever we have an issue outside the scope of what we can handle and how. So, we work with that contractor. They do our annual maintenance on these systems for us. So, our staff does like a quarterly inspection, but then when it hits a certain technical level, we call in outside professional help. So, when they got there and they discovered the issue, that's when we called in our time of material contractor, the expert, and then we realized the situation we had. So, we went ahead and utilized them to do this work for us sooner rather than later.
Okay, so, getting two boilers, is we gonna get a 10% discount or something?
No, unfortunately, unfortunately, no. It's a pretty tight space, a pretty complex plumbing and heating install, installation. So, I'm confident they have the ability to work. They, they, the same company installed, through the same process in 2012, the boiler that controls this portion of the building. So, I'm confident in their ability to do the work fairly and quickly, so...
Now, are we getting the new, you know, bells and whistles boiler that's going to like be there for the zombie apocalypse?
Well, it's definitely, definitely, and we're going from maybe, I think it's a 65% efficiency boilers, to the new high, you know, high 90%, high efficiency boiler. So, when these are installed and operational, yes, we will, we will get savings from that. We always specify, you know, in any, whether it's emergency or not, you know, the high efficiency equipment. It does pose a bit of a challenge, because the newer equipment requires new intake and exhaust plumbing, which is always a challenge, getting the piping in and out of the building. But we tend to specify those whenever we can.
Okay. Those are questions I had.
Well, that's fine.
Any other questions on the boiler?
Great. Under better news, I just wanted to report to the group, we just received a letter this morning from the Morton Arboretum. They announced to us that we've been approved a grant in the amount of $14,250 for the 2019, 2020 urban and community forestry grant. Kudos to Kevin Sanderson, so Arbor Supervisor and City Arborist. We got word of this kind of on short notice, and he went to great lengths to put the paperwork together, got everything filed under the deadline, and we just found out just this morning that that grant came through. So, essentially, you know, what this means is, it's going to help us reduce our two-year backlog of planting sites, back to our normal one-year replacement program. And given the issues we had with the tornadoes, and that really sent us back, I'm just going to go great measures to help, you know, improve the urban forest vitality and help keep us back on track with getting, getting our trees back.
Wonderful.
Yeah, fantastic.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business to bring before the council? With no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.